I'm gonna bring this meeting to order, the City Council of the City of Martindale. And it's June the 20th, 2024, and it's 6:33. And I'll do roll call first. So Terry Warner, here. Um. Well, I thought that was better. Lauren.
Here, I'm here.
Okay, Sam Houston-Clinton.
Here.
And Mike McClabb.
Here.
And Matthew McGovern.
I'm here.
And I'm here, Catherine Blaze, Mayor, okay? So if you would please stand with me for the pledging.
That was awkward, right?
I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then to the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. And then please remain standing for the implosion. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, thank you for the rain. And Lord God, we do pray for more rain because we have been in a drought. Lord God, we just thank you for Martindale and we thank you for the the beauty that you have shown us in Phase One Park and all of the possibilities. And Lord God, I just pray for your hand upon the Parks Committee as they try to decide how to develop that land, Lord God. And I also pray for the City Council tonight as we're making very important decisions and we need your discernment. And as always, Lord, I thank you for the gift of salvation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Mark, you have to pray, Lord.
You answered prayer that quick.
We need to build that aqua park.
A lake. Yeah, we need it for the door.
Okay, Mary, that's our prayer. It's the first public comment.
I'm gonna go roll up my windows.
You'd be like a wet dog with a gun.
Did you roll your windows up, Catherine? I did, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna turn to two parts. The first one's a personal thing, me and my family. And this concerns the name for Phase One Park. And I have a question. Okay, Phase Two to Phase Three eventually will be, well, are they gonna be the same name?
Um, City Council has to talk about it.
Good question.
Okay, anyway, um, and talking to my family members, the George and Nancy Martindale Park, they were very thing. They have also point over, oh, surprise. One of my kids proposed Pickle's Park, and the other child wanted Vanity. Okay, now, River Bend Park is the name of the subdivision of the river from here, and that's the guy that wanted to duck sewage into the river. Okay, also, Cotton Park, that's a good, I accept. Well, anyway, the George and Nancy Martindale Park, it's Martindale River Park, you know, those are those, the, my family, who, who, who. Okay, anyway, library news. On the Thursday, Wednesday of each month, there's Lego Club, and that's gonna be sort of by every Thursday from 11 to 12, 40 times a week. Uh, they do several booths, they're around, based on, and also the board games, welcome to. On Fridays, it's often conversation, that's from 11 to 12, that's for dogs. And that's, I pay for my rent from St. David's Foundation. And also on Friday, one of the great, something new is on Friday Flips. And there's movies available, uh, what is Fussing for the System, one has Antonio Banderas. And these are not brand brand new movies, but recent. Uh, another one that they're gonna have is Raiders of the Lost Ark, so he's already seen all of the Raiders movies, and his hair is a work. Okay, on Saturdays, summer reading is between, and that's from 11 to 1, and that's from a grant from St. Anthony's Children. And the library will be participating in the July Fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry, could I ask a question real quick? Your Saturday, 11 to 1, the summer reading, what is that? Is that reading to them or they come in and read themselves or what is that?
Okay, well, um, they sign up to read. And they, the number of hours that they read, and it could be newspapers, magazines, whatever, anyway, that's what else, the else believe this, also children. Uh, whatever, that's, that's on the, um, okay, during the summer reading itself, there's different things that happen. I'm sorry, Pet Zoo, uh, the balloon man will be here, they had a barbell race the other day. Uh, what was coming out, I don't think it's this Saturday, is a geologist, anyway, they have a lot of certain topic, and that makes a lot for living in the water.
Oh, I see, okay.
And even that, that part of summer reading is separate from that issue.
And you're a balloon guy? You said you're a balloon man? A balloon man?
Yeah.
That like that comes and makes balloon animals?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's a story that goes on, that's time to the picture.
Does he happen to know a face painter lady?
Yeah.
All right, I have to come in and see, will you be there on Friday?
That, um, I don't know what they're sending.
Just get, okay.
Actually, we'll know. We would love to have a face painter and a balloon man at the parade. And we just thought, we couldn't figure out who to ask. We didn't know you had one. Guys, have a Rolodex.
We've been, uh, getting face paint.
But if you, but if he knew somebody, we can book them separately.
Okay. Maybe, I don't know, he's booked up pretty, it's a good look.
Okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
I can thank some of these.
Okay, also, the library will be participating in July Fourth Parade. Um, also, the Health and Wellness Fair, it's set for August 10th. And the Fall Family Festival, and we didn't have it on September 1st, but that's awesome, appreciation, we have, okay, anyway, that's all I.
Thank you.
Okay, our second comment is Sonia Villalobos.
Hello, Mayor and Council members, our City Attorney, everybody that's here. Um, so now it's nice to be able to be on this side, on this side sometimes as well too, but on vacation, so it's really nice to have time to like, you know, still be involved in community, still doing some planning and still doing everything what I do whether I'm on council or not on council, it still goes on. So I just wanted to say that one of my concerns with Phase One has been the trash and the amount of trash that's there, and I know like we're, we're just harping on that, but I know parks guy, parks people that run parks. We have a lot of parks on the agenda, like a lot of stuff. And I think like a whole, you know, big thing is like you do need to utilize our boards and we do need to like listen to their guidance, but I think sometimes there's still a disconnect between our boards and with City Council where it's not like in unison. Um, and then also, so the, you've probably seen the Facebook post that I posted, I posted them, it's on there. But that has actually been trash that has been there that I picked up that one time, Sam is there taking trash to the house. We do have a contractor, what I stated was not in any way bashing our volunteers or bashing our contractors or anything like that. I just feel like the more trash cans that we have, the more trash that's going to be there. And our disposable container ordinance is a puff of smoke if we're not enforcing it. And if people are still allowed to drink, take glass containers, beer, if we don't have beer in the park, so I don't see like how at the city we pick and choose which ordinance is to do. It's either you have an ordinance and then we follow through or we don't. So that's just my thing, it's like if I, if I get ticketed for an ordinance, but you're not enforcing an ordinance, then how am I gonna get charged for something else? So I don't think it's like a pick and choose. Um, another thing like, I really love every time that we pray because we do need guidance from our Lord. But we also need to incorporate our neighbors. I live on Northwest River Road and I would like to have a say so about school parking area. So it would have been nice, the way that it was incorporated in the neighborhood, like everybody that lives there, I would have liked to have had a workshop. I would like to see the engineer study. We have a stop sign that's there that still has not even been replaced, unless it has been replaced, not aware. But since I live there, there's always cars blowing through there. And from what I see on the agenda, now there's more stop signs. I wonder what the radius is if a long trailer truck turns there. So I'm just curious to see if there was an engineer study. And I would have liked to have been, uh, you know, as a neighbor, been involved in, you know, being able to have conversations about it. I know on council, I did propose that we do have an engineer study and that was voted against. Um, so I just feel like I really appreciate council members that do roll up their sleeves and they're out there doing the work because you're the ones that are doing the work, putting up the signs, putting up everything. But sometimes we need to let professionals do their job and make sure that it's done right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our third comment comes from Joy Younger. She sent a top writing copy. Dear City Council, I write these comments as a concerned citizen of Martindale. I was shocked to find out the new approved location for the mini pitch soccer field. The workshop and the survey I filled out only made mention of the location off of Highway 80. Except for a sliver of land against Sam Clinton's property line, 95% of the 1.4 acre lot is in the floodway. Joel Hoffman has some pretty dramatic footage of the flooding that happens there. Over the past two years, we have seen 12 acres of the river as skull crossing, clear cut, excavated, compacted, devoid of all native grasses, and finally filled and planted with annual ryegrass to produce 12 seemingly unbuildable lots. We have seen a riverfront town in, or a lot in town demolish the riverbank for their own personal beach. We have seen a gravel pit within the floodway and city limits fill and excavate at will. We have seen a local church diminish their permeable surface to near nothing. By themselves, you might consider their impact small, but their negative impacts are additive and very detrimental. We are destroying the absorptive properties of the floodway and riparian zone. We are not being good stewards of the river. We are not being good neighbors to people both upstream and downstream. And when it floods and it wells, we are not putting the safety and well-being of Martindale residents first. I thank you for your time and efforts to do right by Martindale, Joy Youngers. Okay, so the next person to speak is Sam.
Hello, good evening, members of the City Council and members of the public. I'm gonna speak to you tonight about ordinance 155.060. This was an ordinance that was adopted by the city in 2008, one year after Allen Bates Playground was built. I'm gonna take my glasses off and read this, excuse me. It's called compatibility standards, and the purpose of this, of this section are intended to preserve and protect low-density residential uses in neighborhoods by ensuring that new development and redevelopment is compatible with the character of the area in which it is located. This standard in this section shall apply to all multifamily residential and all non-residential development when it occurs on a lot within 150 feet of a lot line of any properties owned R1, R1A, or R2. Also, if it's across the street from or adjacent to a lot containing a single-family or duplex use or within 150 feet of the boundary of an area designated as the scenic corridor. So we already know there because of Skull Bridge that the proposed development is within 150 feet of the lot line, it's across the street or adjacent to single-family. Okay, so if you go to Buffing and Screeners Standards, non-residential and multifamily residential development, including, including off-street parking areas associated with the development shall be screened from view from adjacent single-family and duplex uses of R1, R1A, R2-zoned property. The proposed parking lot of the Skull Bridge parking lot is off-street parking and it is next to R1 Development of the Landzola Development. And it says here, the visual screenings shall be accomplished through the use of opaque fences or landscaping along the adjacent lot line. I'll lastly read section E1 here that says tubing-related businesses, including customer parking, well, that, that doesn't, that doesn't relate. For a recreational use, other, other than a tubing business, this setback standard shall be reduced to a minimum of 50 feet if the recreational use is screened from view by an opaque fence or wall with a minimum height of eight feet. I read this and this says that any off-street parking, and this off-street parking lot is at Skull Bridge, it has to have a fence eight feet high to screen the parking lot. Also, it's saying if it's within 50 feet, I mean, it has to be at least 50 feet. So please, please tonight, council, acknowledge me reading you this ordinance that is in the books of the City of Martindale. And if you don't think what I'm bringing to you tonight is not right or does not coexist with the development of the Skull Bridge parking lot, then I'll be knowledgeable of that and will listen to other concerns. But as of now, as I read it and all of you here, 155.060 is a development standard to protect, protect residential neighborhoods from non-residential development such as tubing and recreational activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Mayor's report, and I've been working on the break. There are printouts of both of these, I'm gonna be delivering these and putting them to the residents here. The main thing to know about the parade is that the route is going to close at six, I mean, 9:30, not 6 o'clock, 9:30 a.m. So if you have people who are coming to your house, please ask them to be there before 9:30. Now, anybody who wants to be in the parade, I want them to go down Highway 80 to Quail Run and then, uh, go to Northwest River Road and come back towards town. And then they'll catch the tail end of the parade, because what we've always done is we, uh, first time, first served. Except for a couple of people, the fire truck, the, the police car, the fire truck. Uh, Jane Latham floats, and she started the parade years and years ago. Uh, and then the mayor's gonna go next. So, um, we, I have one thing that, um, well, I've asked Joel Hoffman for a free car. He has lots of free cars.
Yes, he does.
And he's gonna drive me, so I told him I wouldn't make you go clear to the back. Um, so I had one thing that I was concerned about and that was health at the beginning. And Sonia has agreed to help and she's gonna talk to another resident that uh, when people are starting to line up, then she can give them the numbers and then collect the papers and get them back up to the announcer. So Electro Zunica will be the announcer again this year. And, um, Veronica Marino is in charge of booths, so if anybody has a booth or a lot of times these come in in the last week or two and show like, you know, where they're gonna be placed. The Rolox have agreed to let porta-potties be put in front of the Nancy Martindale home. We'll put two there and then we'll put one porta-potty down at the staging area. The people that were down there, since we're saying you need to get there before 9:30, they may need those facilities, so we're gonna put one down there. So are there any questions about the parade?
Are you gonna have the ladies, uh, on horseback to do the?
I don't know, since I don't have people pre-register, so if you know them, please call them.
They're awesome.
Yes.
We don't, they show up.
Yes, okay, so we're gonna move on to the police report.
Hello, back everyone, good. So the police report this month, we wrote 62 tickets, uh, well, 41 citations, 21 violations, 52. I have some computer issues, so I can't give you the whole list of what they are, but if y'all wanna ask, what John Moore's feeding, so forth. City ordinance violations, they're written. As far as patrol activities, three animal calls, five city ordinance contacts, 38 park checks, 22 calls for service, five incident reports, 21 assist county or EMS, 18 motor assist, seven traffic hazards or traffic control, one crash report, one alcohol report. Any questions on any of those?
How many can ban violations have you had?
Well, I wrote one. The can ban is, okay, so let's talk about that real quick, if y'all wanna talk about that. The can ban only applies to in the river, not in the park. People can have cans.
Great, great boundary, basically.
Yes.
I can have that.
Yes, they can have containers in the park, they can't have them in the water. So when you're there at the park, yes, you see tons of people with containers, but you don't see them standing in the water.
Except for glass.
Right.
What rules, it's no.
Glass and.
Glass and tire plant, but that's still in the water.
The sort of city.
Oh, the city, yes, city park, yes, city park, yes.
So what about the alcohol ban that we have in the parks themselves? Uh, so that would possibly, I think, refer to drinking alcohol in the parks?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if we see someone drinking alcohol in the park, we address that. Usually, nine times out of 10, people have the stuff in their car and they're parking, and they're probably pouring it into a cup that we can't see, like your Yeti, I don't know if you got anything in your Yeti, right?
I wish you was, thank you.
I've been trying to smell it just to make sure.
So I don't know. And the fourth, pretty much, I thought, isn't very sniffy.
Isn't that, that typical with state parks? They have arms that is like open consumption, like if you're, if you got your Yeti cup and you got beer, they don't really check your Yeti cup. But if you're, if you got beer cans and you're flashing it and you're drunk, that's what, that's what.
And that's one thing I can say that we haven't had, we haven't had disturbances, we haven't had fights. So if there is alcohol down in those parks, uh, which I've seen the pictures and I've seen the cans and I've seen, you know, the people that post those pictures to social media, I couldn't care less about it, because 90% of the people don't even live here, and they just want the pumpkin heads. But, uh, they, uh, they, uh, people get their trash, people go to their house and drop their trash over there, there's nothing that says they can't. You know, if we catch them, we can get illegal dumping, but I don't know where the stuff is coming from. We're going down there and addressing stuff, uh.
So in your professional opinion, once we did that park mobile, that the trash was greatly reduced?
The, the trash was more confined to specific areas, like around the cans. You don't have it thrown all over the grounds.
So that was a vast improvement.
I believe so, like, you know, I was down there all Sunday.
You would have probably known more than anybody in this room because y'all patrol it every day, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Uh, and then I'll, I'll mention too that the River Advisory Committee met on Tuesday, I think, and what, what, what day was it?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes, thank you. And one of the, one of, she's, she's on, on the committee. One of the concerns I think that the River Advisory Committee had or questioned the city police force was how many citations have been written for, or maybe Sonia asked that, how many citations have been written for alcohol drinking in the parks? And I think that will be a question that will be related to you that would like for you to dispense that information to the River Advisory Committee.
I have to tell Council, Council base about that.
Well, if he wants to.
Yeah.
He just said.
I would have put it in.
Excuse, excuse me, if we're gonna report that to the advisory committee, we as council need to know that information also.
Okay.
Because he, you know, we're the council, remember?
Well, he just told us that he has written one citation, so.
Actually, with two.
Okay, two.
So I wrote one, one container in the river and I wrote one alcohol.
Good.
So two separate ones, two separate people.
I'm embarrassed to ask you this because I feel like I should know this, but do we have the rules posted yet?
So there are rules posted, I talked to Matthew, yes, and gave some signs out, and it's an extra sign, so we get some posted.
So we're gonna be putting more up, yes.
Yes. My, my.
But they are, they're.
There's already, there's already signs up, there's signs up, there's gonna be another one, the one that I'm gonna put up with, hopefully, my.
Yeah, my, we've been slacking.
Um, so it was raining, we're also doing it on Wednesday, but it was raining.
Yeah.
So, uh, but we're gonna put another one, there's two posts, if you look at Allen Bates before you walk down, they're sitting there, that's for this other sign that the mayor, we've got, the mayor's gotten now. But that, we have one sign that's gonna be going up over there, we actually have a mayor's order, a couple extra signs. We, we have a post problem now, now we need to get some posts put up, you know what I mean? So we're trying to fill the post that was already, I think Sam already, we, you know, identified areas and Mr. Holmes came in and put the post up, we put the park mobile signs up last year. We still have to put a replacement to the, the park mobile signs at, um, Phase One where they did the spray paint. But we have to come up with a better solution for the wind, so I'm gonna have to buy a board to support it because the material that the sign is on is corrugated. You know, which is your, like your political signs, it's very thin. So we had used some, uh, two by four, or one by fours to support it, but that, that, you could see what happened, it was just, you know, too much wind. We had to do something a little more substantial at this point.
I am speaking entirely out of turn, and yet, um, an idea the city may wanna pursue about posts is to, um, ask one of our citizens who lives on Kina's Trail, Cecilia Murphy. She has a bunch of lumber that is there, two by fours, two by, I don't know, I don't know lumber talk. She has a bunch of stuff though, and she may have boards that you can use as posts that would be appropriate and you could.
Yeah, we've, we've got plenty of T-posts, we have plenty of T-posts, we just gotta re-identify where.
Do we have to find a strong person or machine to bribe?
We need to bribe.
We, we need to bribe Mike Holmes to come out and, yeah, repot, put some more out.
He has, what's it called, an auger or something?
Yeah.
It's a ram.
No, we, we need a ram.
I can have.
I think he might have that, that too, but he has a tractor and he has.
Yeah, he pounds them.
Yeah, so let's look at our resources in town, maybe we can get.
We normally, we normally we use Mr. Holmes.
We've been slacking, but God, we need to get off of that, we went slacking.
All right, sorry.
The thing is, I'll send you a little bit, so that, that sign has a ton of rules on it.
Mm-hmm.
And I will tell you that no one stops and reads all those rules.
Right.
So what I was proposing, what I ask is, hey, can we make a couple for the big, the big violations, just like no alcohol? Just one sign that says no alcohol, a big note, uh, something like that.
Like the Bible, like he, he got it down to 10, right? Like it's not all the things that are wrong. You gotta, you gotta know that like there's more things than just that, but like these are the big ones that are really gonna do.
These are the ones that we need to focus on, there's a lot, you know, like you can't have a certain size cooler down there, there's all kinds of rules like that.
The big ones.
For the most part, let's get the big ones, the ones that we know. Or put a big sign up there that says, hey, read the rules.
You're responsible for all of these.
Right. Something like that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add.
We're gonna get some smaller ones, like they were talking yesterday about signs like with a can and a bottle and the symbol for.
No.
No cans.
Yeah, so we can put those underneath the park mobile posts, they're already there, so when they're getting out of the cars.
What about when they buy a park mobile, like do they buy a pack, I mean, is there something they buy where we could put it in?
Well, they get, they, they, they pay by going on the app, so they're in front of the sign to get the QR code.
Right.
So that was the thought process, is these important ones need, can be put right underneath there because they're already standing in front of it, paying.
So another thought I had, and I don't know if it could be done, is when they get their park mobile, they pay for that. If there's a way when they get their receipt, and their receipt's emailed to them and it's texted to them, can we put the rules on there so everybody gets a copy?
That's a great idea.
Deny that, I don't know if that could happen, I have no idea.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna add one, one thing to what Matthew said about the Phase One signs and the Allen Bates signs. Currently, as you drive into Phase One, the, the road splits like this, on the right side, I installed by myself a disposable can ban sign. On the left side, there are two T-posts there which will be the great spot for the new rules. As you approach the Phase One Park where the butter sticks are, there is a rule sign there, but that's the old rules that said, I think we open at nine and then, but now we open at eight. I think we open at nine and then, but now we open at eight, and so. That new, that old rule sign will be taken down and the new rule sign will be put there. Also, as Matt, Matthew mentioned, in Allen Bates Park, as you walk off the parking lot and go towards the river, there's two empty T-posts that are standing there. We'll put a sign there, but currently, currently in Allen Bates Park, there are no rule signs at all. No, it's, it's, it fell off. It, it was one of those old dilapidated signs that was like hand painted, that was right on the telephone pole. And so we removed that because as you said, it had so much saying like, do not move rocks, do not move plants, you know, it had all these o, other things. So to add on is that when I purchased all the T-posts, there are new T-posts in the back here that are ten feet high. Several of those and several of, that are eight feet. I also have gone to Tractor Supply and bought some of those U-clamps. By monies from the city, thanks, thank you, Mayor. And, and so I have some of those clamps, which I can give to Mike or Matthew to install the new rule signs. So I, I have those.
We'll get them, sir.
We'll get them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
Code enforcement.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Code enforcement report, we got ten citizen contacts, four follow-ups, city verified that everyone didn't, I mean, had told them to do a citizen contact. Uh, yeah, do some research and training on some flood issues and some, uh, doing some work in the flood area, he had to go some training on that. And then, uh, violations addressed was three, three violations there that we took care of and addressed. Any questions on that?
When you say citizen contact, what does that mean?
Going up and telling someone how you possibly have a violation, this is what we needed to take care of, and giving like the door hangers and.
Oh, the yellow door.
Yes, ma'am.
And they usually do it.
Yes.
Um, I, I think this is a comment, not a question, but, um, when I was talking to, I don't remember which officer, I'll be glad for that. Um, there were, he was, we, I was asking, what about the, um, violation of, oh, it's Kevin. And so I was talking all about, like, what about the violation of, um, the impervious cover thing? And he, uh, went back and got me one of the little violation tags that goes on the door. And he said, it's not actually one of the things that's on here, so we write it on and leave it for the person and then. Go ahead and call them and explain to them what it is and all that. It would be really nice if we had somewhere to point them. Like to a particular page on a city website, maybe, or a leaflet, kind of like, you know, we have the dark sky thing. Maybe we could have one of that for impervious cover.
So we, we don't do it, we're just like individuals who tell everyone where the, uh, the website is, and that's all the ordinance is run there. And also what we do, and once we write it on there, we put a contact number for James, this code enforcement, and so they can call him and talk to him about it.
Yeah, no, they made it very clear that they have somebody and James calls them and they talk it all through and all that. I just was thinking, that's the one thing that I think people know less about than the other things, you know? Because it's newer and I'm, I'm not.
And that's a good.
Not criticize, because that's a tough one. It is hard. And a lot of people, like I didn't know what impervious cover even meant, and I have a lot of degrees. But like I had to look it up and I was telling the mayor that like the, a city of Austin has this expansive website that. Has so many examples of what is and what isn't and all that, and I just thought, wow, what a great idea, it would be really nice. To kind of expand that and then like make sure people know.
And it is a good job on that, him puts up on ours with that.
Yeah.
So it's there, uh, it's gotta get, uh.
Just people need time to find it, I guess. Okay, that's fine, good, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm the hot seat. Okay, three point one, if you notice, uh, on the calendar, July fourth is the first Thursday. So I'm thinking we do not want to have a city council meeting, so I would entertain a motion to cancel the July fourth meeting. Please.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion, three point one to cancel the July fourth, twenty twenty four regular council meeting.
And do I have a second?
I'll second then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have anything to say about it?
Will we reschedule it or just?
I think, I think we'll just, it's a busy time of year and the next one will just be a bigger meeting.
Week later or something like that?
Well, it'd be the third Thursday.
Okay.
And if something comes up, we can have a special meeting. Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we are going to talk about the skull lot. Um, we've divided it into two parts, so regarding the designation of the skulls lot. We have been talking about this, uh, in the last year or maybe even a little bit more before Lenzola. You know, bought the property and then they donated that triangle to us. And what was kind of called Butterfly Park, that's where the culverts are and stuff that's really not usable land very much. So it has traditionally been parking and they had closed off the parking and then. I had taken the fence down because I thought that it was a lot safer for people to park in that triangle than on the other side of the road. Unfortunately, now people are parking on both sides of the road and that's, that's not very safe, but that's gonna be in three point three.
Can I a, 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 ask you a question, please, about this? Because.
Yeah.
I, I know when the Conrad's property was there, that many people assumed that that was public use parking there. And then later in life, we discovered through the development of the Conrad property, that it was private property and then they put the fence up. Recently, as you mentioned, the fence has been removed and so now it is currently being used for public use. Currently, it's being used for public use because the parking lot is there, the fence has been removed, is designated as city property. And so it is currently being used for public use. So I wish you would explain to me, what are we talking tonight about skull and the, for public use? Because it's already being used by the public, so could, could you define to me what we're speaking about tonight in regard to this action item? Because it is currently being used for public use, how are we differentiating tonight with our discussion and our action about public use? Thank you.
Okay, so there had been some talk previously about designating it as a park.
Yeah.
That is not really what I want to do tonight.
Okay.
Um, with the park comes some rules, um, but what we have found, and I, I texted or I emailed everybody on the council. The ordinance that was passed in twenty fourteen, that under Mayor, um, Doyle.
What's his name?
Mojer, under Doyle Mojer, that the city adopted the other bank so that we can. Uh, police both sides of the river. So we need to correct the maps as far as the county is concerned. That, so that, that will reflect that, because that had kind of gotten lost. Some people remembered it, but, um, it just hadn't really been being enforced. And I remembered at the time, Harry was kind of really hesitant and he was like, how are you gonna really enforce that? And there was a lot of discussion about that. But tonight, I just really wanted to define that as a city. Every time I want to really do something like just go clean it up or something. Uh, people get really nervous about what are we gonna do about it? So I wanted to open up the discussion about what are we gonna designate this? It is a public use and I don't think we're gonna be able to stop it. Uh, the best we can do is control it. And so the second part of this is just gonna be talking about the traffic. Uh, so there's two things that I'm concerned about. One is safety and one is we're losing a lot of money. There's like two dozen cars down there on the weekends and sometimes even more. Uh, of people that are using that and it's, we are charging down in our parks, but then we're not charging down on this property. And we could really be able to control that a little bit. What we had seen before. Was when we were trying to just completely shut down the parking, was then people just went across to the other side. So instead of making a huge burden on Guadalupe County. Why don't we just try and control it by saying no parking on Northwest River Road? Making that an official parking lot and start charging for park. And so I would like to open that up for discussion, but first, um, Jared, do you have anything to add to that?
So, yeah, this is an opportunity for the city to, um, recover some. If we put, if we use that space as a public park, public parking. Charging a fee for it to limit the use of the natural environment like we do in, in phase one and Allen Bates. Um, so that way it's not overused and then, um. It would help fill a budget gap, as we know, we had a significant portion of our sales tax, um, that's taken away, um, roughly twenty thousand dollars. This is a way to help fill that gap if we, if we chose to make it a paid parking, uh, area.
So I, I know this is a big question here, uh, can you kind of give me an estimate how much income we've lost on that, say, over a year period?
There's no loss, I think.
I mean, not lost, but to, 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 to get money for the city or fill our coffers.
So.
Just to, just to ask, roughest.
Our parks are roughly, our parks are going to generate roughly twenty six thousand dollars, it looks like, for this year. Um, we anticipated sixteen thousand, probably going to be more.
Good.
So, um, you could probably say about half of that parking utilization could take place in Skull Bridge. So anywhere between eight to fifteen thousand dollars would be a reasonable estimate.
Yeah.
Always probably somewhere close to ten, that was my thought, but.
Um, I won't hold you to that, but yeah, slow it down.
So, so, uh, Jared, we currently have park mobile in our parks. Now, are you insinuating if we designated this public property that we can start to charge for parking because it's public and because it's not a park?
The, the city can put paid parking wherever it likes. They could do paid parking on any property it owns, any of the right of ways downtown. It can do it citywide, you know, you're gonna find that in urbanized areas, heavily urbanized areas where it's. Yeah, this is, uh, you know, a, um, fire hydrant or a, um, delivery spot. If you have a paid full apartment, apartment, so the city could do that regardless. The, um, designation of using parking fees generated out of the parks to go towards parks expenses. Is really an opportunity for us to make the park self-sustaining in terms of the maintenance requirements, given the level of traffic that they get. So, um, you know, our contract costs. Twenty-ish thousand dollars a year, we generate twenty-ish thousand dollars a year parking fees, that becomes self-sustaining at that point. So, um, this, if this was put into a paid parking, it likely would not be, I mean, it's up to the council, it's a council decision. But my recommendation would be to not put it into a, a parking or our park restricted account. Use it as a general fund replacement account and then we'd be maintaining like other city-owned properties that are not parks, like. Any five period buyout lands or, or others.
Okay, and I have one last question for Kent. Um, I have read this compatibility standard of this ordinance. Is there any way that you can review this while we're sitting here on, on your computer? And, or if you can look at it now and look at the verbiage, not now, or say within a minute or two. And, and really tell us, am, am I off about this? And, and I would really like to hear it from an official lawyer's person such, such as you. And you work for the city, and so as far as I see it, I think it applies. And I think it applies because of the non-residential, all non.
Skulls, correct?
Well, I could talk about other things, but I won't do that tonight. I'm talking about as it relates to skull. Okay, so, um, if you would like, would you like us to converse some more or can you break it down?
I just gave him a copy, I just gave him a copy.
I, I just asked him what, what he would like.
So, so, so your, your question is, we have the, if the skull lots are used for parking. Would that then violate section one fifty five point zero six zero?
Uh, yes, and not so much even the parking, but the associated development potentially that would occur because of the skull bridge. Potential development of it becoming more than just parking because there is a butterfly habitat there. We're talking about, uh, changing the direction of the road, which will increase. Uh, people coming up and down that road, perhaps using the butterfly meadow as a place to picnic or park. Eventually, uh, you know, we may want that to, to be a park where, where the road itself going up, uh, it has these things, so.
We're getting a little bit ahead.
Well, no, no, because this standard.
Unless the council decided to make it a park, but.
But it's not about making it a park, it's all non-residential development and it talks about parking. And so that's, I'm, this is why, if, if this doesn't apply, then I'll shut up about it, but I, and, and so.
What, what it says is these standards apply to, one, all multifamily residential. And non-residential development.
Okay.
When it curves on the line within a hundred and fifty feet of the property zone are one, one hour or two. So I'm guessing you're saying that skull lot is within a hundred and fifty feet of one of those zones.
Yes, yes.
Uh, it's across the street.
And it's across the street too, yes.
And, and so, uh, the bottom is the example compliance. What, what, what exactly is it you're saying under this statute that you believe would be viable?
Non-residential, okay, if you look at buffer and screening standards, D one, non-residential and, okay, non-residential. So since we're talking about something that's non-residential, then that would apply immediately. Because it says, "Non-residential and multifamily residential development, including off-street parking associated with the development. Shall be screened from view from adjacent single-family and duplex uses such as R one, R one A, and R two zone property." So we have R one development across the street from a parking lot that is off-street parking. And so this says it has to have a fence to screen it from the R one development that's across the street. That's what it says there.
Is the council seeking legal advice?
Yeah, at this point.
Yeah, good point.
I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm just asking questions so we can get this. Uh, so, so it's.
Yeah, we, can I make a suggestion? Let's just go on with the presentation.
Let me, let me ask this one last question. And so it's, it's your contention of the parking lot, if that's what's decided, would be something that would be required to be screened within.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and is that, is that all there is?
Um, well, no, because if, if, if you go to, uh, E one, that it also says. For recreational uses other than tubing, this setback standard could be reduced, but because, see, the setback standard.
So it's, it's setback in a big fencing, right?
It's setback and, and yes, and it's non-residential, it needs a fence and, and, and that this standard should apply, let's mull over it later. I, I think I'm starting, I'm starting to get some little, uh, unsavory feelings about this, so. I, I think I'll, I'll just stop it from here.
Yeah, Sam, Sam, I, I, I get your point and Jared's point is he, he doesn't want me delving into giving legal advice on the interpretation of this in a session. Which is where he's going, but I, I, I wanted to try and define your questions in open session, so at least you're.
But isn't that the whole point of you being here as an attorney for the city to, to decipher ordinances that the city has adopted?
Well, I think that's one part of a whole ordinance, if you look at the whole thing, it's a zoning ordinance. So it's just one portion of the zoning ordinance. He's gonna have to have time to look at the whole thing.
Well, then I think that I would like a motion to, to, to not talk about this in terms of a public use. Until our attorney has read all the zoning and the ordinance and how this compatibility stands. Until our attorney has read all the zoning and the ordinance and how this compatibility standard relates to this.
I wanna say something, why can't we do the presentation first?
Um, the city administrator is going to make a comment.
So um part, part of my role as city administrator is also as a zoning chair and, and supportive of planning and zoning committee. So if, whether there's a potential violation or, or zoning requirements that might apply. Those are not going to be known until the project is defined. And so for tonight, the, the intent is to define the project from there. As a zoning minister, I can look at that project, consult with the attorney and define what type of zoning impediments. Might be presented based off the, and anticipated or intended design. And so this issue, I think, can be addressed at a follow-on um meeting after, after we come up with the designs.
Okay, but, but we are talking about off-street parking today about Skull Bridge.
We've heard you.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say, the important thing about what Sam is saying is that I think everyone now knows his concern is. If it is a non-residential use, there's a setback and a screen. And so if, if, if everyone, if everyone clearly has that now, then I, I think that provides.
Thank you.
Thank you, can I ask a non-policy question, procedure, whatever question, um, just like a. Discussion, um, I know in an earlier meeting, cannot tell you the date of the meeting. We had talked about having tow signs for the other side of the road, would that impact? What you're talking about, about now people are just parking on both sides of the road. So if we, are we still having tow signs or whatever?
Well, that's part of what we need to decide tonight, how do we want to use this property? Because right now it's just chaos and uh when it comes to safety issues, actually the police chief. Can kind of make those decisions on the spot and actually start towing people if he thinks it's unsafe.
So are we having the signs that we talked about before?
Well, that's gonna be part of the discussion tonight, how do we want to use this property? Right now, we're just letting people do whatever they want to do, do we want to control it? Um, so we have, so if we look at the next, the three point four or three point three. Adjustment of traffic control, we've put in what we had looked at like a year ago. One of the things the chief had talked about was, well, first of all, we have to get the stop sign back up at Quail. I had purchased it a long time ago, we just haven't gotten it back up. Because we need to fix that whole intersection at Quail Run and Northwest River Road, it's coming apart on that corner. And the, the um drainage thing that goes under the road. Uh, it all has to be fixed and that's part of what Landzola is gonna be doing when they are doing their development there. I don't know what the timeline of that is, but that's part of what they're supposed to do. So, and we had agreed to make those culverts even bigger so more water can go across under that road. Some of the things to consider uh are if we do want to make this an official parking lot. Where there's paid parking is to definitely consider putting no parking signs with the. Safe company that we're currently using, not only along there for a certain amount of distance. But also down Quail Run, because that's what people had done, they started parking down Kim, Kim and Ross's property. Uh, because. It's, it's on the corner of Quail Run, um.
Right there.
Right there. There's signs on Northwest River Road that say no parking, but not on Quail Run.
Do we have an ordinance that prevents parking on Quail Run?
Not yet.
We don't do it, well, I know we don't, so, so, I'll let you finish, I'll let you finish.
Well, and so it, what I'm proposing is to have a no parking along there. Now, when people start building that, once they sell the lots and they start building, we'll probably have to do something like park passes or whatever. For people who live there, because say there's a family with teenage children and they've got more than two cars that are gonna fit in the driveway. Uh, you're gonna have people probably parking on the road, but we can address that later on when that actually becomes a reality. Right now, we can make it no parking, just the twenty spots or so that would be in the purple area. And then what we'd like to do is have one-way parking going up towards Quail Run. And one, one, one way down. From, like if you're coming from San Marcos, coming down. Okay, that's the chief ones.
So, so we talked about this over a year ago, I guess, the first time we talked about safety and I think. Sonia, we should, my council saw a little child running out and almost getting run over. So some of the ways that uh we had, we had discussed in the past, I went down and looked at it and I watched traffic. Trying to deal with everybody, there's no, there's no, there's no no parking signs, everybody kept knocking them down. Okay, so it was hard, really hard to enforce at that time, even though there was just no signage. Uh, part of this stuff going in, if you have vision for the future, and we know there's gonna be a lot of health. Is going in there with a driveway is coming out with that Landzola coming in, right? So another issue is speed down Northwest River Road in that particular area, I don't know how people speed down it, but they do because that's a rough road. But they still do. So if we were able to put stop signs right there at that intersection, at the intersection of Quail Run and uh, and Skull. That would slow our way down, you have, you have to come up to a complete stop in, in the middle of that long stretch of, of travel. Because right now people travel all the way from, they come off of Northwest or come off of Bailey and just come down there and just continue. All the way down, there's nothing to slow you down, it's a straight, straightaway. So I'm sure that the people that are gonna build there will appreciate us slowing down a little bit with the stop sign there in the future when their driveways are there. The little spur that comes off of there, that comes up, uh, where people come off of Quail Run and shoot down there real fast. They don't pay no mind to that stop sign at the bottom anyway, they just keep on going through that all the time. And, and that's a narrow road, it's only thirteen feet wide where there's two trees there. So that's really a narrow road, so if someone comes down and they're facing other traffic, you have, someone has to stop. So my proposal is, a safety issue is, one, when you come up Skull and you come into Martindale. You turn right and come up to that stop sign and you can see left and right and you can make your choice which way you want to turn there.
I'm sorry, if you're going down Northwest River Road and you pass um Quail Run. The stop sign is for the people on Quail Run, but the people on Northwest don't stop until they get to.
Correct.
That far corner, that one, yes, okay, thank you.
Can, can I add something else? I mean, I, I drive that road all the time, when you're going, the most time, everybody goes right because it's so steep. That you can't make that right turn and I, you really gotta cock your head back, really, it's difficult. But that would be, that would be a plus to have that stop sign there. Because people fly, I walk, I walk our little dog there all the time, people are flying down that road and having that stop sign will slow the traffic down.
Correct, so when you come off of Skull and you go, if you go to the left, when you're trying to turn back to the right to come into downtown. You, you pretty much gotta go, you gotta hoe to the right side where it's a steep.
Yeah.
And then there's also a lot of loose gravel there, so you gotta just keep inching your way out to see if there's a car coming up to the right. And then finally go, but when you finally try to give a gas to go, you're gonna spin a little bit because all that loose gravel's there. And you have to be out there sweeping that constantly to stop all that, so.
I, I, I had a question, sorry, about the one-way coming up from Skull Bridge where you've got a stop sign there. Where you propose people to stop on a very steep end.
It's too steep on that side, it's flat, it actually.
Oh, it sort of comes up and play, okay, so if we're gonna have parking in that purple spot there. How does the line of sight, how much is the line of sight impaired as people are looking left? Towards Northwest Road when there's gonna be all those cars parked there at the, at looking left?
It's actually now, you put your stop, stop line up a little further and you can pull up on that flat area and you can see. Busters coming, they're coming off a stop sign, so they're not coming down at you at thirty-five miles an hour.
Oh, the stop sign is slowing them down on the other side, okay. It's a, it's a win-win.
It's not a problem, right, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn, Sam, I, we come that way.
Yeah, every day.
Yeah, every day, when I come up from Skull.
Yeah.
And I get some stuff and sort of like I said, I have to turn.
Really cock your head.
And if cars are parked there.
Yes.
It is not a problem for me to see.
It'd be no different than you went to any intersection, you're going to the end.
Okay, no, if you can see where the cars are parked and pass them.
And it's safer now because they're not coming the other way. The biggest problem I have is you're getting there and all of a sudden you're ready to turn and there's a, coming, coming around Quail. And they're making that little quickie and those are the people living on the other side, they're making that quick little turn. And you're trying to go out and all of a sudden, did you go out too far when you made the right, when you made the curve? Or did you have to go and hit the brush? Because they come around that and they don't stop, even if you had a stop sign and Quail coming that way, they just. You know, been taking this little shortcut because that's, they, they just don't stop. If you go that way, they don't stop when they leave their subdivision. They, I have, I've slammed on the brakes, my little stupid progressive thing beats at me all the time for braking too fast. Because they just, oh boy, I didn't see you, they don't, they never stop and they're doing this little shortcut, they're going to Lockhart. And they do it all the time, so I'm a big proponent of this because it's now, it's not a thirteen-foot wide road. It, it's supposed to be over twenty in order to be legal, there shouldn't be a two, a two, a two-lane road. And it was, it was a private road, it was a one-way private road, just, everyone just kind of used it, you know?
He just allowed it.
Yeah, it just.
One more, one more point, are, are we gonna have no-through truck, no-through truck traffic on?
So we already have that, so that'll stop a lot of that too, well, run. Uh, well, this is what government's saying there with cars coming down right now, they come down pretty quick up of well, run. We still have the issue there with the no-stop sign being there because, because the way the road is. But people do travel pretty quickly there and, and they, a lot of people live out that way, they know that that's a quick shortcut, so they just, they just really zip through there. Uh, and then when they get to the bottom, they really don't slow down for the stop sign that's down on the bottom. They just shoot through that and ride across the bridge. So they just look to the right and just go down. Uh, so we can stop all of that by having that one-way going up. Uh, having the stop sign there, getting the stop sign back put in at Quail Run. And then I believe it would make all the people on Northwest River Road, especially in that stretch right there happy. Because people are about to come up, will come to a complete stop before they take off again. Uh, and then the speed limit drops, uh, when you get over to the other side around, around in front of uh, of the Smith's house.
And you did, did you just say there's a stop sign at the bottom of the bridge?
So there is right now coming down uh that little, that little thing, there's a stop sign right there on the right that tells people to stop, but uh.
They, they don't stop there, they, they just keep, keep going through.
This is, this is the other issue about the safety, we're talking about, we have people that are parking here, taking their kids down there. I mean, there's a, I got a picture, video of people, you know, changing diapers in the middle of the road. And if you've ever walked through there, it's not safe. You know, so anything we can do to slow down the traffic and have it going one direction and we're not having this crisscross applesauce stuff going on. It's, it's for everyone's safety.
Yeah.
And haven't changed this since we've presented it like a year ago when I sat there and watched it all last summer, I think it was. We watched everything and, and uh, and tried to address a lot of those issues and this was the one issue that I think that. Haven't really changed much on it, other than we got the no-through trucks, um, in, in our previous uh council presented that. So that keeps the big trucks from coming through there.
And Chief, the engineer, when we gave them a quick look at this about a year ago. They suggested possibly having a tabletop style um. Speed bumps for lack of a better term, so instead of just a roller speed bumps up, over and then down, um.
What location, Jared?
On either side of the parking lot.
Okay.
Um, tabletop speed bumps and, and if we did the tabletop speed bumps, we just still need the stop sign, do you think?
I would still recommend a stop sign.
And there's probably, I mean, you can get them like rubberized, they don't last super long if you do it that way, but. Easier to, to purchase and install than.
Yeah, I would still.
Since all that's gonna get ripped up here soon.
Yeah, that's a good point, good suggestion.
I was, I, I think that stop sign right there is, would do us a lot of damage, make everybody have to physically stop if there's uh kids out there, if there's anyone out there. To me, the proposed parking doesn't really matter one way or the other to me, I think the safety of, of everything is, is the most important, I think. Bringing everybody to the stop right there, because people are still gonna go down there, whether they walk over from those apartments uh or, or what, you're still gonna go over.
We're not gonna have a problem with tech side on this.
No, this is.
Oh, no, this is the same.
There's not a vein or anything, yeah.
No, this is city.
Already clarified all that.
I know, we talked about it all last year, I just, that was one of those things, I know that was brought up in the meeting that you said you were gonna double check.
Lauren, this question is more for, I guess, not you per se, but the, the council to reflect on. I know that Butterfly Meadows has been trying to get the sign flagging their neighborhood. It's a street sign, they got knocked down, they said they've been in here like four times to City Hall to request that it get replaced and it hasn't.
My fault.
Placed yet, huh?
I just haven't ordered it.
Well, what I'm wondering though is like, you know how? There's a lot of people or maybe you don't know how, but there's a lot of people in Martindale that get frustrated that. It seemed, it appears, it appears like we spend a lot of time upgrading downtown. And doing grants and things and here we're talking about all these signs for this one little tiny area, which are all important. And I fully support a hundred percent all of them. But then I just think like how it looks to them when they've come in and requested like four times that like their sign be put back up after it got knocked down. And we have the time and the money and the capacity to get all these signs replaced, but not theirs, the ones.
It's totally my fault, it's been on my bucket list to do and I just haven't done it, sorry.
It's all right, it's fine, that just came to me and I was thinking how it would look to them.
Chief gave me a list of signs all over town and I just haven't had down in order to have.
Can I tell you, well, well, it looks like a lot of signs right here, we're only adding one stop sign because we're relocating some from another area. So we're having to purchase one stop sign, uh, we'll have to purchase some do not enter and some no parking into one way.
The striping.
It's a lot of signs when they've just asked for one, but it's fine, I get it, I'm just, it was just.
No, actually, there's about three in their neighborhood.
Actually more than that, that person can ask for the one, but there's actually more than that.
There's about, yeah, three or four.
Okay, well, that just came to me, Robert.
Um, Chief, are, are you speaking to us tonight in regard exclusively to the safety of this in the intersection? Or do you have any knowledge or something that I could ask you about the use of the parking lot itself?
About the safety of that intersection?
Okay, then I, I, I'll ask uh the council then about that or something later, thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll have to address the, whatever the council decides that sparks the parking and everything else. I'll be the one responsible to address all that, but other than that, how, how that happens plays out, I just want to say.
Yeah, mostly I'll ask them about if the cars are parked there in the past, do we think that it's mostly people that park there that go to the river? Or do they go?
Well, there's two different groups of people who use it.
Yeah.
In the morning, if you notice, there's the fishermen and the kayakers or paddlers. And they're usually gone by noon, afternoon, I, I'm just gonna say, I call it swimmers. Then you have the recreation kind of people, the families that are coming with the little children. And they're setting up picnic tables in the river and stuff like that.
And in the morning, you also have the bicyclists.
And the bicyclists, so you have different types of people using it. And that's why if we do charge for parking, we're probably gonna get uh double. Because you have the morning people and you have the afternoon people.
And it's year, and it's year-round?
It is pretty much year-round, especially for the, the paddlers and the fishermen.
Well, then I, I will ask you just in general about parking then, if, if someone has a truck with a trailer. And we have proposed twenty or twenty-two parking spaces there, which would probably be perpendicular to the road itself. Um, if someone has a truck and a trailer and they say go to the river and they put their boat in there. And so now they have a truck and a trailer, a trailer that's attached to their truck. And these spaces are accommodating single vehicles.
They won't be able to park there, we told them the way, or they're gonna have to drop their trailer and pay for a spot for their truck.
So they would pay for a spot for their truck and then have to pay a spot for their drink?
Or we would have to designate a, a spot?
Various the site across, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, no, you're absolutely right, that was, I was gonna say that as well, there is another, you know, there is the free site across the, the, that is on uh.
Guadalupe side.
Guadalupe side, there is a free access that the LCR, I think, no, the Texas Department of Wildlife is paying them to have access for that. They, in, my point has always been, they're not supposed to be parking on Northwest River Road, that's always been, I miss getting that sign, I had walked. They, in, my point has always been, they're not supposed to be parking on Northwest River Road. That's always been. I miss getting that sign. I had walked the dog and I told, I've told this to Tommy a couple of times. I walked the dog. I went home, got my truck, came over there and someone had already stolen it. Okay. Because somebody, one of the guys had knocked it over, but all of Northwest River Road, all the way down is no parking. And Landzola should not have people parking on their property. Obviously they didn't like it because that's why they put the fence across at, at Skull to begin with. Because they didn't want people parking on it. We've been politely allowing them to do it, but technically they're not supposed to. It is in the ordinance currently. That is a issue of enforcement. If we're gonna be enforcing the rules and being consistent, my point is we should be enforcing that sooner the better. I personally don't want kids walking down and using this facility because it's dangerous getting down there. We have two other parks. And we had brought it up in the other council to actually put a map identifying the other two, two parks there to say, hey, you know, this is really, the, the, the purpose of this location has really been loading and unloading. It only became a waiting area because of COVID because the parks have been closed. It had become known. Safety wise, for me personally, I don't want them walking their kids down there. The way they, especially the way they've been doing it, I would much prefer from a safety standpoint, them going down to Allen Bates and/or Phase, Phase One, as it's called now, and doing it in a much more controlled, no traffic issue at all, once they park. Here they're parking and they're still navigating a pathway that we don't have. And there's poison ivy and oak all over the place over there. Um, and when, if, if we do make this a parking, we're going to reduce the amount of vehicles that are going to park there because right now they're breaking thirty vehicles. I've been doing a count every weekend for the last five weekends. My wife sends me a text message when she goes or I go get it. And yes, we're losing twenty-five minimum every single week on just one of the two days on the weekend. Okay. So that's two hundred and fifty dollars times two, that's five hundred dollars a weekend, minimum. But that's assuming one turn, not multiple turns.
But if, if you're saying you counted twenty-five or thirty cars there, where are those people? They are in the river and they have trespassed on three sides of that bridge because that's private property. The only access that is city property is right there beneath the Butterfly Meadow. So if we're encouraging parking in this Skull Bridge parking lot, and you've seen it before too, people are sitting in the river. They're cooking in, in the river or eating. And so the only access point is one on the Landzola side, on the Scott Jecker side, or on the, uh, Michelle Rambow side or whatever. So these people that are parking there, we are encouraging them to go down and trespass onto other people's.
No, I think we're encouraging them to go there because we're not charging for parking. There, they don't wanna pay in the park.
They'll pay here, but you're a- asking to, uh, propose to charge for parking at Skull Bridge, which people will pay ten dollars and they will walk down.
How do you know that's our?
Because they've been doing it for years and they don't go to the park. And, 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 and so, yes.
Thank you. Um, um, my legal understanding is that in the state of Texas, on either side of a bridge
Yep.
that comes off of a public road.
Yep.
It's free for people to get in and out of the water. So it's not.
You're correct.
That's all.
Yeah, we can't stop them from doing that. But I, yeah, I just meant it's not, you don't have to.
We have an ordinance that says that that area is for loading and unloading only. I agree. I don't want, I'm telling you, I've told, I've told everyone that I've talked to, I'm very consistent. I don't want families going in the water there just it, just for a safety standpoint.
Yeah.
Okay. Are they trespassing? Okay, we can have that discussion forever and.
Or you can't. It's a legal issue.
You know, and, and, and they, they, some people are going on the peninsula and there's, you know, camping out. Okay, they're trespassing. We can't do anything about it because that's on the other, that's not part of our city limits. I'm, one of the, one of the things I'm big on this is I want to ideally get these people to understand if the fee is the same here as it is over there, as it is over there. Would you please go to the safer place?
I, I was not trying to make any opinion out of it. I was just simply stating because I heard someone say that the only way to get down is to go through poison ivy and actually you can go on either side.
Can I say something? Ever since they opened up the parks and wildlife side, they sort of waived any kind of traffic issue when they allowing everybody to go through here. So access for, and you see that truck is in that picture.
So as the proposed parking that we're speaking about and that you wish that it is only people with boats to get in and out of the water. If, if, if we, well, that's what has been mentioned.
That, the goal is Sam, the goal is you're, 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 you're getting them to go where you want them to go just because it makes more sense. Okay? If the fee is the same in both, you're going over here.
But then people might.
We're also restricting the number, I'm sorry Sam, they're restricting the number of lots. Right now, they're using the whole other side of the road. In essence, we are reducing the amount of parking spots that are available to these people. We're getting rid, we're basically helping putting the trailers over there on the other side. They're gonna have to use the facility that, uh, team and Michelle get paid for from the Texas Park and Wildlife. That's where they're supposed to be going. That's where Texas Park and Wildlife wanted them to go. That's where they're supposed to go. I personally don't like it that their pathway is, is more dangerous, is more dangerous than this one. I have film of it, me walking by it three times and I had to jump off the road three times. So I will not ever do it myself, but that is what the Texas Park and Wildlife pro- proposed. Okay? I want them not to go there. Sonia brought up a, at this meeting from the last year, she said there should be a sign identifying the other parts. And I wholeheartedly agree. That would be a solution to say, hey, man, this is full. Go there.
So, but if, 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 okay, no, I'll, I'll.
You've had your car. Let me, can we?
Yeah, mine.
Uh, Laura, you're attorney. Bud, you're an attorney. As far as I understand the law, when it's a public road, to clarify this, they have, you, they can walk down there and go into that river. There's nothing we can do about it. Because they have a, the, the repairian, the repair, or the, uh, the gradient boundary, which is part of the gravel bar. There's eight foot easement. So if somebody walks down there, walks down, doesn't grab a car and they walk down and they go across that bridge and they walk down there, there's nothing we can do about that because it's a public county road. And that's always a problem. Or when you go down the river, you'll see low water bridges, you'll see overpasses that are always got trash and garbage because everybody goes down there to access the river. It's a public road.
Just like they told us down here at your place, the text out said, hey, they, the public can have access to.
Yeah. But as what Mike is, is proposing, then if people.
I'm just telling the truth.
No, I know. That's, that's what I'm gonna commend you on is that if the parking lot is there such as proposed and we are asking to pay to park, if people choose to wanna go there and park, and now upon what Mark, Mike has said that they have free unbridled access to access to the river, then who is gonna enforce the worries that has been mentioned by, by McGovern about people that are in the river, that are sitting in the river, that are throwing away diapers, garbage, defecating and urinating around that bridge because we're gonna allow them to be there. Because we are allowing them to be there because we're saying.
No, we can't.
You just said that they had access to it and that's fine, but now we, we have parking. We're gonna let them come.
Your limited amount of people.
It doesn't matter. They're still gonna come and be there.
It sounds like we got.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's get some authority here.
Go ahead, Mimi. Go ahead. Tell them, Mimi.
Once a bunch.
Except we don't have to have two people drinking at the same time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mimi.
The law process.
That's right. Okay, our attorney is recognizing.
The only way that you could conceive of doing it would be to use the broader authority of considering something to be a public nuisance. And that would be, that would be slightly difficult because there are some established rights there. As I say, you, there's no guarantee. That, that would be the only.
And, and there's no enforcement that our police force can do on the Guadalupe County side.
Well, yes, yes, that's why we passed out that ordinance that was passed in twenty fourteen that the city adopted the, the side, the Guadalupe County side clear through town.
Yeah.
The issue is, I'll say the issue.
Yeah.
The issue is no one ever, back then when they adopted this ordinance in twenty fourteen, went in and updated the maps, which required by law to say, hey, this is the city limits. So now you gotta notify the public if what is exactly the city limits. So now that, once we go in and update the maps, the current maps, which shows right now, if you go to our website, Cal State University's website, the state of Texas website, they all have the city limits of Martindale is on the Martindale side of the river. We need to put those city limits on the other side of the river in accordance with, in accordance with what is adopted, uh, with that ordinance that says we have the river on both sides of it. Then there's things we can enforce. We can enforce the cans in the river and, and things like that. We can't, we cannot enforce the, we cannot enforce things like that because it's a, a state river and you can have that stuff. You can have that anywhere. Cannot have it in the parks.
Yes, fine.
So like, the, the, uh, I saw a picture this recently, uh, uh, on, on Facebook, on social media, that, that, that table was on the Guadalupe County side. It had a, it had a, uh, a grill in the water. Not messed up as a leak.
Okay, Mike?
Yes, I'm, I wanna talk to is a paddler. Uh, that, that.
Of children?
A paddler, I paddle children. So, so just give you a little history about that parking lot. By the way, that's one of the most popular paddling sections on the San Marcos River. And people usually go from Con Park or City Park and they pull out there and they've done it for years, for years and years. So I'd say fifty years at least. And the problem is a double edged sword with access. I mean, really, my personal opinion, we, as, as a city of Martin, we don't own that river. It's not ours to, to own. And, and to say you can't have access to this river. It's a public river. So that's been going on for, for, for years. And, and I'm gonna give you a little history and I'll, and I'll be quiet. Uh, Tom Gomans, TRPA gave, I think for Allen Bates, twenty-two thousand dollars years ago, two thousand and ten, I believe it was. We got a letter somewhere. And the agreement was to have access to unload and unload users only. And that's why they did, at, at one time, that road was, was shut down.
Yeah, that were, there was an ordinance.
There was an ordinance and that road was shut down. They had a burn blockage. And they, and that was the agreement that they would, the city of Martindale due to giving twenty thousand to Allen Bates, our first part, that the canoeers with TRPA wanted to keep that as an access. And, uh, it's been going on for years. So that's, I'll leave it at that. So.
Okay, so we're here tonight to try and decide how to use this property, how to control it. Um, so if there is a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the traffic control as referenced on page six of the packet that the, uh, the chief provided. That includes the additional stop, stop sign and doing one ways up and down on the Skull intersection.
So we're voting on three point.
Yeah, we're gonna do the easy one.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Just read the, the motion again. I'm sorry.
Make a motion that we approve the page six of the agenda packet that the staff provided for us showing the one way going downstream from the Guadalupe side with a stop sign and the additional stop sign on the upstream side, making the left turn and making it a one way going from the upstream side down to the intersection. So we'd have two one ways instead of the two, two ways that we have currently.
Right, right. Thank you. And putting a stop sign on Northwest River.
Putting, obviously, the, actually, two stop signs on Northwest River. We're relocating the stop sign that is down at the bottom there on the, uh, down, down, the downriver side and moving it up. So there's only, uh, the cost of one additional stop sign and a couple wrong way.
Actually, it's no cost because I just realized there's a stop sign right here right now. So we don't have any additional stops.
Oh yeah, because it's on the other side. Yeah, it's going the other way. You should move it.
We won't have any additional stop signs that we have to purchase.
All we have is the do not enter.
Yes, sir.
On the, on both sides. We need to do not enter on both of them. So it's, yeah. Well, only on the one, because the other one's gonna have a one, you need a one way.
One way, two one ways.
Yeah, two one ways. That's it.
So the motion is to approve the plan that's presented on page six.
Yes.
And I, I'm sorry, I just have one more question about the off-road going up to that stop sign. In the discussions that we had last year, there was some want to put uh, on that road coming up, a narrow adjacent area where unloading and unloading of, of trailers would exist on that road going, going up. As that road goes up to the stop sign, are we solely saying that we want that road to be one way only as a road?
That's all the motion included.
With no.
Yeah.
The motion did not include, the motion did not mention anything about parking on those roads.
Okay, good. I mean, I'm just bringing that up because I wasn't quite sure if I saw it on that. And I know this was some discussion last year, but if you are proposing now, just to be a road.
See where that sign is right here. Loading and unloading only.
Yes, sir.
That current sign is there.
And it looks really bad.
Oh, yeah, but it's.
That was a pretty good thing I said.
It, it is there right now. So no, I'm just proposing we make that a one way, but that loading sign is already still there. Okay.
May I, I wanna respect the, the, the forum. Um, I know that you've allowed some people to speak. If I may, I would like to just ask a question, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, I know that there has been, uh, like the safety has definitely been highlighted, but where is the pedestrian safety?
So if, if, if this gets approved, pedestrians, they can, if, if all this, you gotta talk about all this other stuff. So we've got me a lot, a bunch of what ifs.
So there's not, I know that it's being passed tonight. The way that it's showing does not include any pedestrian safety. So I think that if there is gonna be something that.
But it's not on the motion yet. That's not on the motion. The motion is just the traffic control.
Yeah, traffic.
I, I, I have an, I have an answer for you, but we're just, let's stick with the, but I appreciate what you're saying. Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then oppose. So the motion carries. Okay, write that down.
Yeah.
Chief, you can contact your brother. Give us a blow. Okay, so now let's go back to three point two regarding how we want to use that property. Do we want to make it an official parking lot with paint parking? Do we wanna just close it off? And just put out no parking signs everywhere? How does the council want to use this property?
What, can I, I'm gonna make a quick comment in relationship with Sonia Roddick because it's a very valid point. The one great thing about making these one ways, which we just did, is now the road that was able to handle two cross, cross traffic, particularly coming down from the upstream side, is now reduced to one vehicle. So we have twenty-two feet over there of width and the road only needs to be twelve. So we have plenty of room, even on the other side going back up. We don't have the cross traffic. Before, if you were walking up, which is the easier way to walk up because it is much flatter. If you walk up the upstream side, I actually drove my daughter's little Nissan up there and that's how it started the conversations. We went that way and then, oh, we gotta make a right. And we spun out the car because um, there's too much gravel there and the slope is almost a double in, in an angle than it is the other way. So, and I kept saying that, that's really not safe because then the trucks were coming or e- even the school buses were coming. And they, and they were not using the uphill side. We still have to clear the canopy. There's a canopy issue. There's a couple of trees that need to.
Worse ones wet.
Yeah, but, but they were not, they're not even using, neither the garbage trucks. They're all going upstream and then making the right. We're gonna force them to come one way. And those are the ones, and they were doing it just because they're like, we don't want anyone's coming the other way. They're, they recognize the safety standard because obviously they're a bigger, wider vehicle. So I, I think we've sort of addressed a lot of the safety walking situation. I'm not saying it's perfect, but I definitely think we've addressed it a lot by doing it one way.
Yes.
Dorsey, could I give you a second to answer your question? Thanks on, um, thinking back on it, is it possible to do a walk to paint a designated walk space?
We can do anything.
I, I don't know. Wait, wait, I have, I have, I have a related, I have a related comment. Because what I was wondering is, as you were describing, the fact that it was two lanes and now it can be one, can we just paint whatever the required one way, like paint the lines?
Yes.
Of whatever the one way is so that like there's a broader side that people can walk down? And then maybe just make a crosswalk in two places, one across. And then maybe just make a crosswalk in two places, one across the V and then one on the Y part?
I defer to Tommy's brother because he, that's his, that's his expertise.
So that would be, like, when I was thinking about Sonia, as she was talking, I was, well, I wasn't thinking about Sonia. I was thinking about what she was saying. And I was thinking, like, that would be, like, that would actually address the-
So this could be, we'll talk about later on.
To Laura.
Yes, sir.
What you're saying will paint a stripe for a pedestrian walk, like, like a marking, a yellow marking.
Yeah. For people that feel, say, walking in and then just make a little crosswalk.
Good point, very good point.
Um, with-
Mike, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Uh, with this, with this discussion item though, three point two, it says regarding the designation of skull lots for public use. So I can see that we're now saying officially that the public can use it. I, I think saying what you just said to where we can have paid parking there now and we're gonna be voting on it is a far, far stretch from this item on the agenda. It doesn't say, "and have paid parking." It says for public use. Public use can park there without paying currently, and I think it should still exist. So I hope tonight that this agenda item doesn't get stretched into saying, now that means tonight, we're gonna decide on start to charge for parking. I-
Well, you're on the side ocean. How about the paid parking?
I would like to make-
Deciding how we're gonna use the property. And that's what, uh, we were trying to figure out, okay, are there other, does the council have other ideas how the property can be used? I don't mean to pigeonhole the city council into just one choice. We feel that the choice to have paid parking is a logical one because it's gonna limit it to, say, eighteen to twenty spots. Because now the part that's going up, we're gonna have to probably shave off that one parking spot so that if somebody needs to turn left instead of right, when I come up that road, I'm always turning right because I'm from home. But say somebody's coming up that and they need to go the other way, we're gonna have to probably make it so that somebody has the ability to come up to that flat part there and be able to see what traffic is coming.
One, one of the things that I had proposed, I talked to my wife about to address this is, ideally, what we had looked at was on the downhill side, pretty much where the letter E is on that, where it says green space. Somewhere between that-
There's the M E's.
The one where it says space. I'm getting specific, honey. Let me finish. You're interrupting me. I'm gonna say it. If you go down, if, right there, there is actually a, people that have actually walked in there. We can put steps down to get them really close to the lower level there. Um, obviously, there's, I know about it because there's trash and there's a lot of really fun poison ivy, poison oak down there. Um, because I've walked in it unfortunately a few times, um, picking up stuff. But there is a starting, almost like of a step there, and that's where I would, I, I really, that's where I wanted put steps. And that would be accessing from the parking area down to, and then instead of them going all the way around to the stop signs, if we can get them down straight, that would be better.
And there's some creative ways to put steps in those bags of cement.
Yeah.
If you dig into the dirt, you don't have to dig out all of the grass and everything. You just kind of dig a little area to put that, uh, cement bag and then you wet it. And then it's permanent.
Yeah, so we just need to put-
One, one quick, uh, Tommy, you still there?
Tommy's there.
Could you address what you just said earlier about the painting, the, like-
The stripe?
Yeah. Did you address that to him?
Tom, could you address to your brother the idea of painting, uh, the, the, um, the lines on the sides of the road where they're gonna be one way only now? Um, painting like a, a pedestrian walk-
Correct.
Space and then like cross-
So when I asked him to come look at it once before-
Yes.
He told me that you could hatch out, especially what they do, and that's what he calls it, using their drop and-
That's right. We like lingo in here.
So he said you hatch out an area or you put your pedestrian crosswalk across the road. Uh, Mr. McGovern's saying, if you come down there in the middle, you could put that crosswalk straight across right there and you can probably hatch one out along this, along the upside, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
And so you can hatch out, you, like a two walk.
That would be great.
A question for you. If we do that stripe, can you see when they have those little plastic things that keep people from coming over to another land? Could we install those to, to designate that as a boundary for a pedestrian?
Yeah, yeah. You seen them like when you exit the highways and stuff, the little rubber things that they knock over? But, uh, you can put those-
No, they don't knock over them because they make us safe as pedestrians.
You can put those in and there's, there's a lot of different things that you can do.
Now, can we make the people walk in them?
No.
We can't do that.
We can only do what we can do.
Okay, so then I would like a motion based on this resolution three point two discussion item regarding the designation of skull lots for public use that as this agenda item is read, that we should only vote tonight on public use and not stretch this def- definition at this time to include paid parking. I would only like us to stick to this resolution and say for public use and not read in between the lines and start talking about paid parking. That's my motion. We're on the floor right now.
Okay, is there a second? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Hmm, okay.
Hearing no motion, the, hearing no second, the motion dies.
So that means whatever we're gonna talk about, public use is now, that we're just gonna talk about it and open it up to the public and paid parking then?
Well, we've been talking about the different uses for this piece of property.
And it's just gonna be whatever somebody motions next.
You got it.
But how is the public to comment?
Can you please raise your hand?
Yes, yes.
May I see?
Yes, you can.
Approach the council?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, how is the public supposed to know exactly what's on the agenda if it's not this business?
Um, it talks about skull lots.
For paid parking.
Um, well, it says the designation of skull lot for public use. I think that pretty much says that it's open to discussion as to how, how the city council wants to use this property. It's been discussed in the last year.
I don't really think it is because it says public use. It, it mean currently, we have it as public use. To, to say that this public use now is branching off into saying, okay, now we're gonna start to charge parking for it is a way advanced designation of public use because number one, it's not-
Okay, Sam, your motion dies.
Yep.
Do we have another motion to, that somebody else would like to address?
I'd like to make a motion to allow no public parking at Skull Bridge Parking Lot.
That's a different motion.
Okay.
I would make a motion at this time to allow no paid public parking in the Skull Bridge Parking Lot at this time based on the definition of public use.
Well, well, your first motion was no public parking, right? Your second one was no paid public-
No paid public parking then.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Okay, well, so much for that. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion dies. Is there any more discussion or is there another motion?
I make a motion, you know this is coming. I make a motion that we investigate providing paid parking at the skull intersection that is currently, currently being used for free by the public on the riverside of Northwest River Road in the purple area as mentioned on the attachment with the, in the packet.
On the Calhoun County.
On the Calhoun County.
Investigate what? Feasibility?
That's what I was gonna say.
No, I want to-
We're investigating.
The number of spots that can be done and to initiate the process of charging.
So why are, just out of curiosity for more of a grammar sake, but why are you not proposing that we do it? You're just-
No, I want to propose we do it, but they've got to obviously determine how many spots it's gonna be. There's gonna have to be spots.
Well-
Do I need to make a motion differently?
No, just provide it.
Be more specific.
Some, some practical matters of if we designate spots, that means we have to pave it, stripe it. And that's the additional cost.
Fair enough.
And A B A handicap it.
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
So.
Okay, so we want to make it more general is what you're referring to.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we, um, begin doing paid parking in the purple area as proposed parking on the attachment in the agenda packet.
And do you want no, uh, no parking on the Northwest River Road?
That is currently already an ordinance. There's no parking and there was a road. So I'm assuming we're gonna enforce that going forward.
And, um, skulls, or I mean, what?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm referring to the purple, so.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second, though, Bobby.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
So, let me get this, the practical effect is paid parking starts when, if this motion is- When, when will it start?
Well, we have to. Don't we have to stripe it and all that?
It, it would-
So when you stripe it, it'd be like phase one.
Until the, uh, the, we order the signs for-
Signs and strapping.
There's no strapping. I mean, in the parking lot. There was no parking, there's no strapping in the parking.
We may need an ordinance on this. So if the motion passes tonight, it would be, um, to come back to the ordinance setting out the, the requirement to pay and then the penalty for not paying. Um, and so there's really nothing other than a design intention that could be approved.
Because I, when, when I'm listening to that, I think Sam's concern has merit.
Right.
But if the practical effect is therefore coming back, put a bow on this and make it right, I think, I think that's, I think that's good. If, if it was, if it was tomorrow, we're going to start charging at those spots, then that, that's where I think-
You're correct, sir.
Sam, Sam, she would have a real bit. But, I mean, it's-
They've got a lot of-
You're defining the public use and then thereafter taking steps with it.
Yeah, who, who would include it.
Okay, so we're defining the public use that we're gonna start charging pretty much the same way as that phase one.
Yeah.
Where it's not defined parking spots, but they have to.
Hey.
Thank you.
And I'll, and I'll say one last thing about this, about the parking there is that I am, I am not happy about parking there because I think what will continue is that people will trespass onto other people's property. They will continue to be in the river, defecate, urinate, leave, uh, diapers there and all this. And, and we have had no measures to hardly even maintain the parks we have so far. We have signs that have not been put up. We, we're having problems with garbage. And now we're opening up the whole Pandora box of having a whole nother development up there when we don't want people in the river doing the things that Matthew would wish that they would go down to the other parks. Are, are we gonna ask everybody that's, that's sitting in the river, oh, well, we wish that you wouldn't be here and do this. We wish you, you would go down there. I'm only stating and saying, and I'm not quite through. I'm only stating and saying is that us encouraging parking there is gonna fully, much more, give us more of a problematic situation there that we have seen has been existing there summer after summer after summer.
Uh, Mike?
As previously stated by two attorneys here in this room, a public road, county road, they can go into the river. They have an eight foot easement in the gradient boundary to go in there. I don't care what we do, people can walk down there. That's the bottom line. That's the problem. That's the problem with any bridges in the state of Texas, that there's public access. It's always been that way.
I'm sorry, why do you say that's a problem? That is not a problem. That is because the state of Texas decided that the rivers belong to everyone.
Correct.
So that is not a problem with a bridge.
You're right. I'll, I'll rephrase it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. What I mean is the problem being littering, crashing and all that. You're right. People have a right to access. You're totally correct. I'll re, I'll retract that statement. You're totally correct.
I've, I got one more statement and I, and I, I respect what you're saying, Sam. Look, when they fill up on our side right now, they're parking along the road on the Guadalupe side. We can't stop them from doing this. They're going to go there. I'm just proposing, I'm trying to create as, as much control and a safety as I think that we can actually do. I would much rather than be parking where we're proposing than parking along the road on skull on the other side on the Guadalupe side. If there is very little room over there, people are driving very, very, very fast. It's a blind hill. I have video on my phone where I've walked up and down there three times from the parking all the way down there. Every single time I had to jump into the bushes because the truck almost ran me over. Sam, this is the safest way in my opinion, and I respect what you're doing. What you're doing is not gonna stop what's gonna happen. They'll just park over there and they will get hurt. And I don't want them to get hurt.
Here, here's why, Mike, I like your analysis of something a problem. Because what, what government give us does not always create good things.
Exactly.
And so, acknowledging that what government has given, in this case, and that is rights of access, has ancillary, it creates ancillary issues that may be problematic, is okay. But what I like about what the council's saying is even though we can practically acknowledge the existence of some negative impacts, we're still in the bottom line. And that, and that's, that's what I think is good about.
Well, man, I could have, man, I'm, I'm not an attorney. I, well, I wish I had said it like that.
Mike, even if you had said it like that, I still would have objected because all I'm trying to say is, I cannot, me personally, I cannot afford to buy a property on the river.
You got it. I totally agree.
I can't. And so if I try to go in anywhere from up there to way down there, there is nowhere I can get in, right? And so like, if the government said, we, we all own river access.
Correct.
It is not up to our city council or any given individual to take that right away, especially when most of the people historically on city council have owned property on the river. The rest of us, ninety percent of the city-
Hundred percent agree.
Can't afford that. We have to get, like, we gotta go, oh, I guess I can sneak in a foot over here on this concrete ledge. There, I don't want to, I want to have a nice green space I can get in on. But like, if that's all I got, that's what I'm gonna use. Cause like, that's all I got.
Correct.
I'm not wealthy, so.
That's correct.
I did, I have a comment about the parks. Um, we're working with the current, um, caretakers of the parks right now. And so in the winter months, when they don't have as much to do, um, they will be beaming back some of that, uh, underbrush and stuff like in phase one. Yeah, they don't have time to do it right now because they're busy cutting grass and picking up garbage because it's the busiest time for that. But in the winter months, December, January, February, they can then cut some of that brush back and make more river access.
Is that all about, okay, good point.
That's in phase one.
That's a great-
So that's our goal is eventually to make as much river access as we can.
I totally agree with Lauren. We, we don't, as I said, the, we don't own the river. Martindale does not own the river. It's state of Texas.
Yeah. I just wanted you to know that we're-
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to three point four.
We both, did we both?
Oh, did we not?
We did both.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose?
Nay.
Okay.
One.
It does carry. Okay, going on to three point four, we have some applicants for the river advisory board. Uh, Malcolm Johnson is being reappointed. Uh, Dorothy McGovern is being reappointed. Uh, Nick Styler, it hasn't been on the river advisory group and we would like to appoint him. So they're all spots that need to be filled. So if I could have a motion to appoint these three people-
Full information to the council, there, there's a, uh, one of the positions, one of the places is, is currently being filled by someone who does not live or reside in the ETJ or whatever. She resigned. And so that's why, even though this is an even number year, why we have three positions.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification.
So if I could have a motion to appoint these three people to the, uh, river advisory board, that would be great.
I make a mo-, God, you guys are making it hard on me. I feel like Sonia now because Sonia always made all the motions when she-
Mr. McGovern, you're gonna give me a shit, you're too fast.
Oh, you do it then. Good.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to, uh, consider the following applicants for the Martindale River Advisory Board.
No, elect.
Elect?
A point.
A point.
A point.
Yes.
A point. All three. Malcolm Johnson, Dorothy McGovern, and Nicholas Styler.
And do I have a second?
Awesome.
Yay. And I did want to make one more comment. So um, Adrian has been working on the flood plain management stuff. And having a realtor on this board helps with our.
CRS, yeah.
CRS.
Oh, that's great. Nick would be a great choice. He's a realtor. He's on the council before. He knows the city. Good choice.
Just FYI, the city ordinance is also um, advised having a realtor. Um, on the historic commission, just for future information.
And there is one. Carlton's on there or was. He'll probably apply.
The other the other position we would need uh, for the river is a. Insurance agent. And we had talked before that um, when this first came up, when Adrian first brought up, says we're afraid we're going to lose all the, you know, the city would be down to maybe. Three or four people represented, so we have to kick people out. We can always expand that to seven. And then those two. Professionals would be the other two positions, and they would a little more legitimacy about where they reside. Because they are the specialists, if you will.
So the other.
Who's insurance agent?
Oh, yes. So the other two members are Jay Daniel, who is the chair, and Joy Youngkers. So that will make a full uh, commission or advisory board. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, moving on to three point five, the parks. We have Ramon Rivera, who has uh, put in his application. He has been attending the last few parks meetings. And so if he gets appointed, this will, this next one will be his official. Meeting, I guess.
Yeah, he he look like he's very well qualified.
Yes.
His resume, very qualified.
I really like.
He's like, yeah, very qualified. That'd be a great addition to our park advisory.
Do we have any more vacancies on one more, one more? So we still need, right, so one other person to. Okay.
So if you know anybody who would like to be on the parks board.
I don't know.
Talk them into it.
Especially if they sell insurance.
Well, I don't know about the insurance.
River.
Okay, so if I could have a motion to appoint Ramon Rivera to the parks board? Carrie.
I knew you were going to do that. I don't know why, but I could feel it. Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Ramon Rivera to the Martin Dale Parks Advisory Board.
Well done.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There you go.
Yay. Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, at this time, we will take a five-minute break and then we're going to go into executive session. And we will have business.
Relax.
Okay, it's ten twenty-seven PM and we are back in uh. Session. And we really have nothing to report. Um, other than Adrian Flores is is leaving the city as of July the eighteenth. And we uh. Will move forward with uh, finding two people to replace him for now. And we'll move forward from there. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, thanks, Adrian, for all your work and the service to the city over the last four years plus.
Yes.
Um, the big shoes that you you've stepped in the field and uh, you've done a great job. Wish you the best on your your next adventure. For those for those who don't know, he he accepted the role as a as a city manager. Um, with a with another city, so he's he's going to go be the boss somewhere.
Don't forget about it, Adrian. First, forget about what Mark do.
Okay, that brings us to the last thing on the agenda, which is naming the parks. Um. And so we listed those names here, but if you'd like to table that, tell another time since it's ten thirty.
Yes.
Would you entertain a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table uh, consider the Martin Dale Park Advisory Board recommendation to naming phase one park.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
All of a sudden, they speak up.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.